Good evening, everyone. I will call this meeting regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. Would you please rise and join me in flag salute?
Aye. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, ladies and gentlemen, please call the roll. This is Elder. Here.
Mr. Asper.
Here.
Mrs. Cozart. Here. Dr. Loughlin. Here. Ms. Nease. Here. Dr. Loughlin. Here. Mr. Music.
Here.
Mr. Palmer. Here. The next part of the meeting is hearing of visitors, part one. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to comment on any item that is on this evening's agenda. You will be given five minutes to address the board. Please note that I said "comment." If you have any questions, we would appreciate if you would either call the appropriate administrator and have those answered, or stay after the meeting and talk to the administrators or any board members and have your questions answered then. You will be given five minutes. At that time, you will be asked to take your seat, and if any board member wishes to comment, they will do so then. If not, we will call for the next person to approach the microphone. So at this time, I'm opening the floor to any comments from the audience. Would anyone wish to approach the microphone and address the board this evening? If so, please state your name and address. I will move for adoption Resolution Number 126, the approval of minutes of the regular meeting held November 19th, 2012, the reorganization meeting, and the committee of the whole meeting held December 4th, 2012. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 126. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Solicitors' report, Mr. Nagels.
No report, I agree with you.
Thank you very much. Legislative report, Dr. Loughlin.
No report.
Thank you, Dr. Loughlin. Education and planning. We'll open it up, open the floor to, looks like Kevin's here this morning, this evening. Good evening, Kevin.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to apologize on behalf of Blair. She cannot make it tonight. She's feeling under the weather. The first thing on the agenda that's in board is the Keystone Exams, which, as you all know, have to replace the PSSAs. The sophomores and juniors at the senior high have been taking these last week and are continuing them this week. Last Tuesday and Wednesday, they completed the literature exam, and this week, they're doing the algebra. This has been particularly nice for me as a senior, because we've been allowed to come in late. So I just thought I'd tell you this. Also on the agenda is the National Honor Society Holiday Service Project. This year, the senior high National Honor Society adopted two less fortunate students in our district that don't really get a Christmas. They sleep in the same bed as their mother. So the students in the National Honor Society all chipped in money and went out and bought gifts. We gathered around two dozen for these kids, and we also got donations for a twin-sized mattress and a crib for the kids, so that they can sleep in their own beds. And those gifts and the beds will be shipped out this week, so we're really proud about that. And the first thing you'll see, I also threw in is about the school-wide lift-up that I spoke to you about last month. We got second place, so we won $1,000 for the broadcast department. Even though it's not first, it's still a nice contribution. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Very nice project they've talked about. Educandor Educational Programs. We have a presentation this evening, K through 12 Career Awareness by Susan Kuhn, Joe Golden, and Sarah Sotoloff. Welcome to our meeting. Oh, sorry.
Thank you. For the past one and one-half years, our school counselors have been working on devising a K through 12 comprehensive school counseling program. The American School Counselors Association model includes three components in their model: the academic component, the personal social component, as well as the career component. Tonight, we're going to talk about the career component and the opportunity that we had, or our counselors had, I should say, to put together a K through 12 model. Along with that, we were able to work with United Way, who provided an opportunity for us to be awarded a $5,000 grant. And I can say, our counselors submitted their plan, K through 12, and we did receive the $5,000 grant. We have also been asked to present possibly at various locations, including the PPE. So we're very excited about that. We have three of our counselors here this evening presenting, and what's so unique is we now have the opportunity through our professional development flex shops, thanks to Mrs. Swiger and Dr. Corano, as well as Robin Pines, who gave us the opportunity to work with K through 12 counselors in sections of time, three and four hours in an evening, which gave us the opportunity throughout the entire school year last year to put this model together. One of the requirements for the grant is to form an advisory council, which consists of many stakeholders sitting at the table, community members, students, administrators, parents, as well as Board of Education members. And Mrs. Cozart serves on our advisory council. And the role of the advisory council is to look at our plan, receive, give us feedback, and have us modify our plan and report back to the committee pertaining to the data and the improvements that we see with our students pertaining to the career component. So at this time, I would just like to have Mr. Golden, Joe Golden, who will represent the elementary counselors and the elementary component pertaining to the goals of the program, as well as the stakeholders who will be involved. Let's let you guys all introduce yourselves.
I will do.
Okay.
I'll introduce myself. Hi, I'm Joe Golden. I'm the counselor at Mountview. It's very nice to be here. Thank you for having us. As Dr. Tepper mentioned, last year, our focus was on the career domain. In counseling, there's basically three domains: the academic, the personal social, and the career. Last year, we focused on the career domain. One of the major objectives, as you see up there, is the career plan overview. What we did was, we worked K through 12, creating a career plan, and one of the major objectives in that career plan was two major ones. And the first thing that we did was look at the PA standards. Those standards, we got involved in, our teachers got involved on them. Those standards are K through 12. The teachers were asked to form a gap survey. That survey looked at, every teacher had to look at the standard that was appropriate for their grade level. And we saw a lot of really great, wonderful career education things happening in our building. What we did as counselors is looked at the careers that, or the standards that weren't being met, and we created and reform around those areas. So that was one of the first major things that we did. The second thing that we did was we looked at the national counseling model. And I won't go into the whole model, because I guarantee you that the chairs are uncomfortable and are not for that discussion. But what I will say is this: it's not to create a cookie cutter program. What we're trying to do here is, it's really about the best practices in counseling. It's about creating some continuity, some similarities from counseling programs to counseling programs to counseling programs. And what we did with that model is, there's four major domains in that model, and we focused, our professional development was on each one of those domains. We looked at our foundation. We looked at our delivery system. We looked at our management. That's where the advisory council came in. And then we looked at accountability. And so in that, in all of that, came this career plan. So we're going to look at that career plan, and I'm the first up to look at it. And I was told to make sure I used this correctly, so. All right. Summary of the grant narratives. The elementary narrative. This is just one piece of the career counseling curriculum. This is, this is going to happen in May. This is a career fair or a career day that will happen at the CSC. And this was selected because money is going to be, our grant money is going to be used here for our transportation for our students. So this is for all sixth grade. What's going to lead up to this, as far as lessons and so forth, is we really want the sixth grade to connect from interest to career selection, and how that plays a part, how our personal interest affects the decisions that we make with our careers. So in our grant narrative, we were asked to select stakeholder groups. What we did as the elementary counselors, we selected the parent stakeholder group. And what we're doing here is, when the students leave, they have an exit interview ticket. When they're leaving the career day, and those exit interview tickets are to be used at home with their parents. And it's basically, the idea here is correlating personal interest with possible career choices. And as it says there, it's part of the sixth grade curriculum. The last one there is the educator stakeholder group, and that's, that piece is being revamped and vamped again. What we want there is to have the teachers' input on the career and that, the career day, as far as the lessons as well. So we want to get their input. So we have a post and pre-survey that we're going to use, and that touches upon the standards, the PA career standards. So that's really the elementary narratives. I'll turn it over to Sarah, and she can discuss the junior.
Hi. I'm Sarah Sotoloff. I'm a junior high school counselor. With regards to the junior high narrative, when we did our gap analysis, we decided to focus on the ninth grade. We have developed some seventh and eighth grade career exploration programming through career cruising that is being introduced at the elementary level and continued at the junior high school level in the classroom. We want our students to continue exploring their interests, but also opportunities in terms of job openings in the area, predicted job openings, education opportunities post-secondary. So what we're going to do with this grant is we're going to focus on our freshmen. We have proposed to assist in piloting a program at Westmoreland County Community College called College for a Day. We are looking at a date in April to do this. We'll be taking the entire ninth grade to the Westmoreland County Community College. Ahead of time, we'll be working with those students in their English or US History classroom to reconnect them to the work that they've done in terms of career exploration with the career program. So when we arrive at the College for a Day, we're going to divide into different groups. We'll be talking with admissions counselors, financial aid, academic counselors. We're hoping to have a panel of current students as well. And another thing that we're going to do ahead of time is to have our students identify courses that they may be interested in sitting in on. We're going to have them pick maybe one or two, three, one, two, or three courses, and then try to match them up with their top picks. So they will have an opportunity to sit in the classroom. We're really excited about this opportunity. There are a lot of students who, for the first time, they will be on the college campus. Just getting them there, out of, you know, our building and onto the college campus is really a coup. I mean, that's building a bridge for a lot of students who maybe have not had that opportunity. For students who are probably four-year bound, what's nice about this is we're building the bridge that the senior high school already has with those secondary institutions, and we're extending that bridge down to the ninth grade. So what we're trying to do with this group of students is really meet the goals for college and career readiness, so that when they are leaving for intro, they are prepared to enter into a concentrated area, that they've narrowed down some choices, that they realize the rigor that's going to be involved. And also for the students who are at risk of not graduating, we want to engage them in the ninth grade level, or continue to engage them, but by taking them there and really connecting them to post-secondary opportunities. We will have an exit ticket, and that will be taken back into the classroom to foster discussion, so that we can continue this over extended period of time. So that is our plan for the junior high school narrative. We'll be engaging primary and the post-secondary stakeholder group. That's the relationship we'll be building with Westmoreland County Community College and the educators, because we are asking our teachers to accompany us on this trip and also to foster that classroom discussion. We'll be sharing our information with the advisory council in May as well.
Now, Susan.
Good evening. On behalf of the high school counselors, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity. At the high school under career awareness, we have some additions and we have some changes that we'll be doing this year. And they're going to start this Thursday, so the first thing we'll be doing is our career fair. And as I sit here and say, I really shouldn't, it's really Wendy Hader takes the role of this, and we really support her with this endeavor. And what she's done, we've always had the career fair, but she made it larger this year. And really wanting to get more exposure to the kids of different opportunities that are out there. We've been reaching out to community members and parents to bring more people to the high school, so the kids are leaving with a little more opportunities than maybe just a few things that maybe they've seen at home, or they know a school teacher, so forth. The second thing, which is also her brainchild and new this year, is what's called a working lunch. At the high school, kids, we try to put things on, like, I can't leave my calculus class. I can't do this. So what we've done is we've taken the lunch period and are bringing in presenters for the students to bring their lunch and be able to meet intimately, like, more in an intimate setting, as I can't help tonight, so that they can discuss careers, so forth, in a smaller setting, a little different than the platform that we use with the career fair. So those are the opportunities that we're bringing in this year to create more career awareness for our high school students. Basically, the goal for the high school is, obviously, we want our students to graduate, but we want them to graduate with a plan. We have a nice graduation rate, but like any school district, we wanted to improve. You can see some of the goals. We have a nice rate that goes on to a four-year, a two-year school. And we would like the students that leave here and enter the workforce to have more of a plan. We want the students to go to the vocational school, to follow through with their goals, complete the programs at the vocational school. So we're really looking for just more knowledge for the kids to leave with a plan. We don't want someone leaving here saying, "I don't know what I'm going to do," or "I don't have a plan," or "no one helped me." So we just want to reach out, and we're going to start with these career fairs, the working lunches, to help the students to be more successful. Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Sure. I have questions, particularly at the elementary level and the junior high level, about, not only about careers, but about academic possibilities leading to careers. And you all know that I'm very interested in Career Technology Center. And it seems to me that the program at Kennametal has pointed out to us how valuable industry mentoring and all that sort of thing is. Are those being filed into all of this, that the idea of choosing courses in high school and junior high that will lead you to where you say you want to go, and looking for mentors in industry, that sort of thing? Have you talked about any of that?
We have. And that was actually, when we had our advisory council committee, that was one of the very first, one of the things that we pointed out, there were several key points. One of the key points is the parent involvement. And I think what you're saying isn't necessarily addressing those, all of those different, at the elementary level, but being exposed, like, they did, they talked about the Kennametal program, and being exposed to these different programs, how valuable those programs are. That's very critical. And I think what I walked away is that parents at the elementary level have to understand that they're in this, that there's some, there's some boundaries that need to be broken about models and how we educate and how we, you know. One of the things that jumped out at me last year was, you know, Pennsylvania ranks fifth in sending high school kids to college. We rank 45th in graduating in those same college schools. Like, to me, that's not just something at the senior high. That's something that I personally think I need to be involved in, and parents need to be involved in. And the high school student that sat, who did a fantastic job on our advisory council, he was fantastic, he talked about, we need to be exposed at a young age to different career opportunities and what's out there, and making those connections, and having parent involvement. So all the things at the elementary level, you know, we did, those were similar things that were addressed at our advisory. I want Sarah to give you more of those next.
All right. Couple of things that we focus on. We focus on transitions, critical transition years. So moving the students from elementary to junior high school. We take a lot of time to familiarize parents with different academic opportunities at each of the levels. We do that moving six to seven, and we're actually going to do a new program in conjunction with the high school. We're preparing our eighth grade students to look at the ninth through 12, the picture nine through 12 academically. We're definitely emphasizing rigor. We want all students to have the opportunity to take a rigorous curriculum. In terms of the Career and Technology Center, students visit all sixth grade students, and all ninth grade students have the opportunity to visit the Career and Technology Center. Our students are identified as learning support, have extra opportunities to visit the Career and Technology Center if they want to get some more hands-on experience, to get a feel for whether or not they might be the right fit. And we also partner with a private industry council who administers the stage assessment, which is wonderful. It would be great if we could do that for all students, which shows what type of matches would be the shops, about 15 shops where the strongest matches would be.
Do you want to mention about the sophomores taking the ads? Yes, please.
Okay, sure. We've talked about, oh, sorry. We've talked about having the 10th grade, all of our whole 10th grade class take the ASVAB, which is the Army Service Vocational Aptitude Battery. Right now, we use Advertise. We give it the first week in March, and it's basically, any student that's interested, but it comes back with a home score. We have people from the ASVAB that come in, look at the scores with the students on their computer. They do a great career research, like, workbook, exercise activity is really, really nice. And so we've talked about starting an electronic portfolio and having all of the students from K through 12, which is another supplemental for that.
Can you discuss about whether or not the K through 12 is 10th grade?
Yeah. The reason why we selected the 10th grade is because at that age, they're not able to be contacted by the military with their name on a test. It's after their, with the age come of junior senior year. So that's why we've got, for all 10th graders, it's a free test, and it will give them the opportunity to do that exploration at that time, so.
Also, in order for us to meet the requirements of check 339, what we need to do at this point in time is to develop a career portfolio, as Wendy mentioned. We'll start doing that in the eighth grade civics course. I should start really touching on that, but we are going to use career cruising, which is going to provide us the opportunity to do an electronic portfolio. One last piece at the junior high school. Jackie Rutter, who's here today, has spearheaded a career speaker series. And in the past two years, she's focused on STEM careers. Just this past week, we had a nuclear engineer from Westinghouse come and speak with 70 of our students, and next week, we have a veterinarian come in to speak with our students. So we are really trying to broaden our students' exposure to career opportunities and then mesh that with the academic coursework that they will need to successfully enter into post-secondary education.
Thank you. And please come to the career fair if you are available, on Thursday, as a presenter or a listener. That's exciting things that's happening, and what you're about. Great, thank you. The next curriculum committee meeting will be held January 15th at 5:30 here in the center, so if anyone is wish, or wants to attend, please be so. That is my report, and I will turn it over to Finance with Mrs. Elder.
Thank you. I would like to bundle Resolution Number 127, 128, and 129, which are the treasuries report, the payment of bills, and the budgetary transfers, and move for adoption of those through resolutions.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt Resolution Number 127, Number 128, and Number 129. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Motion, resolutions. Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution Number 127, 128, 129, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
I'm going for adoption of Resolution Number 130, which is to approve the Enstown Borough Tax Collector effective October 1st, 2012. Her name is Michelle Wilson.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt Resolution Number 130. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 130, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
And I'd like to put together Resolution 131 and 132. 131 is to accept the local audit reports for the year ending December 2011, and 132 is for the year, for the period ending September 2012. We move for adoption of both of those.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt Resolutions Number 131 and 132. Any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor of approving those resolutions, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Property and Supplies, Mrs. Cozart.
Yes, I'd like to move through adoption of Resolution Number 133, if they don't work with the spring sports equipment and supplies as listed.
Did I hear second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Elder. It's been moved and seconded. We adopt Resolution Number 133. Any questions or discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
I'm moving for the adoption of Resolution Number 134, permission to advertise for the Gemma school supplies, our design supply, and the special electrical supplies, and all the spring sports equipment supplies for the 13th.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt Resolution Number 134. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of adopting Resolution 134, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That also passes unanimously.
And I'm moving for the adoption of Resolution Number 135, to authorize a method for time sense, time sensitive request for changes not exceeding $25,000 to the applied bonus contract.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. We adopt Resolution Number 135. Any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor of adopting Resolution Number 135, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Awesome. Thank you very much, Mrs. Cozart. Student Activities and Recreation, Dr. Loughlin.
Yes, in your packet is an orange sheet that has the senior nights listed on them. And I would like to say we had a well-attended sports recognition night last night. And what was, what I would say is, we had to switch things around, because some of the kids' letter in one sport had to go to their hockey game, and I think Jackson's up on the stage there, though, because he was swimming, and had to run over, get his letter, and go back to the swimming, so it's nice. It's really nice to see that the kids aren't alone.
I agree. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Loughlin. Community Relations, Dr. Zorch.
Your report.
Thank you. Westmoreland, that's me. I have no report this evening. You received the minutes in your packet last week. We will not meet during December. We need to end June. EWC/TC Joint Operating Committee, Mrs. Cozart.
I just would like to thank all the board members who made it to the reorganization meeting. Lovely, as always. And we were able to review the new video that the students made, and it's pretty impressive, because I think all understood the intro to it, so it's very, it's very impressive. And they're actually talking about trying to get it on the cable channel, so we're looking at HGTV and through channel 42. So you may see it on there. The other, just look. So that's exciting for the kids. And it was all, it was all created by the students. It was quite a.
I am just so impressed by that evening. The food is fantastic. The students enjoy talking to you about making the food. I've talked to them, and it's just nice.
They're very proud. They are proud of the work they do there. It's an opportunity to naturally show them, especially kids. They do a great job. They do a great job. And it's even, it's even like all the culinary students get their hair done by the cosmetology students. Everybody's tied in. It's all, it's all tied in, so it's good times. I think it should be noted that the video is to increase the awareness of need for manufacturing. And it was promoted by the Industrial Pressory, which is an outside group. I think that was critical to understanding that it's not just to bring awareness of EWC TC, which is an important piece, but it's also to recognize. No, it was definitely targeted to manufacturing. And, you know, as we all know and have all heard, I mean, it's just on NPR today, I think we were talking about, jobs coming back into the market because of robots, because now we can create these robots that are actually doing the manufacturing. But there's still a really huge need in this country for manufacturing skilled workers, and that we're not producing enough and fast enough. And so this video goes a long way in educating the public to that, and also hopefully bringing the students in and saying, "Wow, I really love talking with my hands. I may be an interestedness." You know, so it's a very dynamic video.
Thank you, Mrs. Kozar. Board Policy, PSB Liaison, Mrs. Elder.
Your report.
Thank you. Transportation, Dr. Maffa.
Yes, for those of you who have planned on taking the white paper, you know that I think I have disappointed the council that meeting. And we're pushing it to January 30th in conference room with the CERs. Sorry about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Maffa. Mr. Palmer is not here this evening, but I see nothing under technology, anything. Our meeting is January 15th. The adoption follows the course of the community meeting. Okay. January 15th. Okay. Thank you very much. Superintendent's recommendations, Mrs. Warner.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 136, which is the resignations of Michael Alton from the Labor Department and J.B. Gasek, I'm not sure if I have it correctly pronounced, who is a language arts intern who I believe has received full-time positions.
Still move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 136. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution number 136, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 137, which is the appointment of two substitute, one substitute custodian and one substitute secretary assistant.
Still move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 137. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor of approving resolution number 137, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That also passes unanimously.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 138, which is the granting of tenure to Tiffany Ellen, who's a junior high school earth and space science and general science teacher.
Still move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 138. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
And the rest of the information is there for your personnel and attendants.
Thank you. Your list of call of any cheer there, so if you can attend any of that, I'm sure your attendants would appreciate it. Any other business to come before the board this evening? We don't have a hearing of visitors, part two right here. We have, we will now open the floor for hearing of visitors, part two, for any, for members of the audience to make comments to the board or on the item. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Saying none, I will entertain the motion to adjourn. Okay, that's okay. Okay. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Merry Christmas to all of you. Have a nice holiday, and we'll see you again.